... board meeting. Trustee, if we leave this in a pledge, please.
Pledge of leavings to the flag. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, we're going to open up the meeting for public comment. We'd like you to please approach the podium, give your name, address, and please keep your comments to five minutes. It was brought to my attention that I didn't do a very good job of holding people to their time limits at the last meeting, so during this meeting, I will be a little stricter as far as the five-minute time limit.
John D. Wolf, 725 Creaker Road. One question for the mayor. How are you going to expect the board, and you especially, to have a meeting on Christmas Eve and so on when I don't believe your wives are going to let you out of the house?
Those meetings have been rescheduled.
Good evening. My name is Michael Khan. I live at 610 Webster Road, directly across the street from the village water treatment plant. I've lived there 33 years, raised the kids, turned a two-bedroom farmhouse into four or five bedrooms. I was here November 12th at this meeting. Lots happened since then. We have some real problems with the composting across the street. They came to me years ago and told me they were composting in a rear and DEC required a permit, and they talked to me. I said, "No problem." Well, since then, the composting has moved up to the front. I'm going back 20 years now, 15 years, and it is a huge undertaking. According to your plant manager, it's 177 tons of treated sewage and composting leaves. They have big blowers inside. They use a custom grinder or shredder to shred them, aerate them, throw them up in the air, fluff them up, and then eventually they do cover them. Last July, they cut all the lower branches off of the trees, the four or five rows of 40-foot pines between the road and the composting. This made it extremely bad for the neighbors in the area. The slightest breeze sends the smell, the gagging odors, all the minute bacteria particles. I talked to Jake, who's the superintendent of Public Works, and he says, he tells me along with others, that I'm the only one that complains. He's had remedies over the years that cover the rows, that keep the temperature under control. They'll only turn and work the piles on days the wind is just right. I was told November 6th will be done in a couple of weeks. They told my wife, "We don't tell you how to run your property." How can mixing this human sewage with leaves not be a health hazard? This affects 1,000 people or better in the immediate area. Last August, I sent Mayor Cahill a letter requesting him to look into this, and I would like to discuss this matter with him. Weeks went by, months went by. On November 6th, when they turned a pile, some of my grandchildren came over to the house that evening, and they had to turn around and leave. It was a choking gagging effect. There was nothing healthy about that. The wind was blowing, it was a nice fall day, and we could not be outside. Some of the neighbors were lucky enough to be on the other side of the wind, to live down Wall Road where it wasn't bothering them that day, but they get theirs too when the wind changes. You know, when we talk to these plant guys and try to talk to them about it, their concerns just, they don't have any concerns about it. This plant over there, I mean, not only does it handle the 4,000 or 5,000 village residents, it handles the doctor's office, dentist's office, restaurants. It takes all of Xerox, it takes the septic haulers, those guys bring in concentrated sludge. It takes commercial and industrial, everything that goes down the drain, and Xerox ends up over there. They take leach aid. Leach aid is what gets drained off of landfills. All this stuff goes into that plant, they process it, and turn it over and put it on the leaves out front. The town would never do that, the town of Webster would never do it. Van Laer in Arundecway, they take this treated sludge, put it in container trucks, a half-baked driver gets the truck washed before he pulls out of the property, and he takes it to a landfill, which most plants do, landfill is. They don't mix it with the leaves like Webster does. Webster mixes it with the leaves in front of the property, which is, I don't know, maybe 60 years ago when they started this plant, they didn't do composting, and they were in a rural area. But now, the community has grown up all around them. We got kids, we got grandkids. I talked to Gerald Wrightmeyer from the Department of Health. He comes over to my house a couple Mondays ago, and he says, "This is terrible. This is really terrible. I'm going to talk to Mayor Cahill, I'm going to talk to Ron Nesbitt." He said, "I'm going to talk to my supervisor, we're going to figure out what we can do about this." Two or three days later, we call him up, he says, "Well, it wasn't that bad." I go, "Jerry, I said, "You asked my wife to come in the house because you couldn't stand the smell in the driveway." He goes, "Oh, no, no, it wasn't that bad." So I talked to Wade Silfworth, his supervisor. I said, "Is there anything we can do?" He goes, "Well, there's 26 special conditions that the village has to meet, and they meet them." I said, "We're afraid for our health." You know, I says, "Can you test the soil? Can you test the composting?" He says, "That's the responsibility of the plant. It's their responsibility to test it." I go, "We're afraid for our health." He goes, "If you can prove to me that there's a health issue, I'll test it." That was the end of him.
I apologize for having to cut you off, Mr. Khan, but your five minutes are up.
Okay. We have almost 300 signatures of people from the community, these people here that live in the area. We could get 1,000 of them. There's nobody that agrees that human sewage, treated human sewage should be composted out there.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
You said you never received a copy of that letter that I sent you in August? It's right here, along with Joe O'Neil, that signed for it, certified now. I understand that they might have went in the trash, because you never responded to that.
No, they didn't go in the trash.
I heard they went in the trash.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Christmas, this is my family. These are the kids that play across the street.
This is certified letters that we mailed to the village.
Mary Christmas, that's my wife and I and my grandchildren.
These were certified letters that went to the village in August and we never heard from them, never responded to. Joe O'Neil signed for them. She said that she did receive them, and nobody never called us. They said they never received them at the last.
Could I have your name, sir, please?
Who's the one speaking now?
All right, Polly, come on. My name's Christopher Ball. I live at 172 Belvist Drive in Penfield.
Chris Ball?
That's correct. I have three children, ages eight, six, and 15 months, whose grandparents happen to live across the street from the water treatment plant where the composting is taking place. My son, who's eight, suffers from periodic bouts of asthma. November 6th, we were at his grandparents' house with the overwhelming odor, the stench of the composting happening across the street. November 7th, we were there, November 8th, we were there. On November 9th, we had to bring him to the doctor's office for a severe flare. He had obuteral treatments, steroid treatments, is on a 30-day regimen to help resolve that flare. When we shared the information about what's going on at the composting plant with pediatrician, she said that is absolutely a contributing factor to the flare-up of his asthma condition. She recommends, at this point, that we do not, I repeat, we do not bring an eight-year-old child to a house that is across from the composting process that's taking place because of the negative health impact it has on that child. Well, there are other, as was mentioned, 1,000 houses in that vicinity, but imagine there's a few kids in that area, 950 kids at the Clem Road Schools. How is it impacting those individuals? Are they even aware of the health impact that's taking place? My kid's pediatrician, Dr. Laura Shipley from Panorama Pediatrics, is going to be reaching out to the Monroe County Health Department to share her concerns, find out what's taking place to prevent this activity from impacting the health of the area surrounding. These are real people, real impacts, their families feeling.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Polly Khan. I live at 610 Webster Road. I live right across the street from this compost. For five years, I've went to many doctors for respiratory and lung problems. I went to the doctors a couple days ago. He says, "You have to get out of your house. You have to move. You need to get out of this house because it has come to a real health concern for me." I have a letter from the doctor, the what choice do we have? We have to make a decision to sell our home that we've been in for 33 years, raised four girls, 10 grandchildren, they're all under 10 years old, they're playing in my driveway all the time. My kids are in my house every Sunday for dinner because we're a very close family. We've worked very hard to make our life in Webster. We moved here to raise our family. My husband and I, we have worked really hard on that house. We started out with a little two-bedroom house there. My house now is four bedrooms. We have a couple baths. My husband's worked really hard. My husband built my house for me and my children to live in Webster. We sent them to Webster School District. My kids did excellent. They've all went to college, they've made great lives. They all work really hard, they all own their homes. All we love is our family. And here it is, my grandson. What am I going to do if my grandson dies? Because you guys can't help us. The town can't help me, you can't help me. It's okay for me to breathe that with respiratory problems, the lung doctor, my doctor, everybody says move. Very easy for them to say move after living there for 33 years and making my life in Webster where life is worth living. This is where I move to raise my family and live with my husband, and I got to move because you can't move a compost that I am breathing and dying from. And along with my grandson with this asthma problem. Do you think that's fair to me and my family and my neighbors? I came up in, I, look at all my neighbors, they've all got problems. I was up in your village last night, and I walked to six of your neighbors. Within one hour, everybody said, "They agree with me." How can you live like this? I know they'll do something for you. Well, so, I hope tonight that you look at my family and look at my 10 grandchildren, my husband just passed pictures up, and really take, you know, take this into consideration. To please just move the compost, move it, take it out. The village of Webster, they send yours to a waste treatment plant. Ron Nesbitt said that he'll be glad to take your leaves. Thank you so much for listening, but this is very, very upsetting. We're all human, really, we're all people.
My name is Kansas McDonald. I'm here to represent over 300 signatures of people that have signed our petition.
Where do you live, ma'am? Could I just have your address, please?
467 Holt Road. I live less than one mile from this compost pile, and my children, three of them, ages nine, seven, and five, go to school at Clem Road North. They are stuck in this compost wind every day, whether it's north, southbound, east or west. They go to my parents' house for daycare, they live at my house, and they go to school. So many of the children are just like mine, they cannot get away. How many of the residents are here about this human sewage composting? A raise of hand, please. Is anybody here for it? They want to see the village continue on? Please take this into account. We have approached Jake right over there many times about the situation. He has been knowledgeable about all the complaints, and as of two days ago, on Tuesday, we had a woman call our number that we have plastered and said, "I just talked to Jake personally, and he told me I'm the only one who complains." How can that be true? Look at all of us here, fighting to save our health. Let's talk about money, because I know that's the bottom line, right? With the village and taxes, we're talking about $10,000 a year is what it costs for the sludge to be removed. Is that incorrect?
It is incorrect.
Okay, can you please explain to me why that's wrong, Mr. Cahill?
Based upon the tonnage that we use in the hauling and the dumping fees, the cost is approximately 55 to, what, 75,000?
Yeah, 55,000 to 60,000.
174 tons is what you told, is that what you use as treated human sewage.
Dry tons.
Denise at the Town of Webster Sewage Plant says that it's $59 a ton. So 59 times 174 is $10,000.
Eight hundred and something like that. So that's dry tons. The Town of Webster budgeted this year $163,000 for sludge hauling.
Yes, because they have about one twentieth of what you have, 20 times more than what you have.
Their plant is twice the capacity of ours, and they hauled, I don't have the exact figures what they hauled, but they'll haul, you know, there's dry tons, then there's tons, wet tons after it comes out of the center cation, they're not apples to apples, for comparison.
How many employees do you have over there, full-time?
Three.
Okay, so, we can both agree that it takes a number of man-hours to keep this plant running for just the compost, making piles and aerating piles and buying graders and machinery to compost these things. All of these things cost money. Now, if you were to get rid of some of these man-hours, the pension, the healthcare costs, the money for this machinery, the electric bills to pay for the aerators, the chemical purchases in order to try to hide this, you would probably be at a credit, if not breaking even. And think of all the people that you would be saving. If this is such a big deal and such a moneymaker, why don't you move it up and put it in one of the areas that you have in the village that go year-long without anybody using it, like the Carnival Center or the Old Burger King? These are areas of the village that nobody is using. Why don't you try to move it to this area? People are getting sick, and this is going to quickly turn into, just like the city of Rochester. The city of Rochester had lead-based pain in their homes. When it was discovered that lead-based pain was hurting children, causing disabilities, causing handicaps and birth defects, the lawyers went through the books, found out which homes were cited and who lived there during those dates. They then approached those homeowners 10 years later, 20 years later, and said, "Do your children, are they sick? Do they have learning disabilities? I know they're older now, but did you have problems when they were little?" And then they sued those people that owned those houses during the years, along with the city of Rochester, for any type of management. And I'm sorry to say that that's pretty much where you're headed.
Yep.
People are... You have known about Mike and Polly's plight for years. Mayor Cahill should have had records of people complaining over this the last years, a decade. Whether or not he's told you, that's your decision and that's your issue with the board. Five weeks ago, Michael and Polly came here and passionately told you, just like they did tonight, about all the issues. Have you talked about these at all and come up with a resolution?
We have been going back and forth with emails. We've been talking about things that we're going to be doing this entire week.
What are we looking at, please?
Our superintendent of the DPW will be addressing our process when the public portion of the meeting is over. Do we have a concrete resolution as to what we're going to be doing going forward at this time? We do not, no.
So you are not looking to stop this compost and remove it today?
At this time? The board has not, the board has not discussed that at this time. No, we have not.
I wish that you guys would come down and live in these houses and purchase them and go through these health issues that these people are going through, because this is turning into a lawsuit against the village, and your own employees are going to be suing you for their own health problems come five or 10 years down the road, when they have masses of fungus in their lugs causing cancer. It is a direct correlation between people that work at these sewage treatment plants with human composting and those that sue their employer.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cahill, sir.
Excuse me, sir.
May I end up being...
No, you may not.
... for you and...
Sir, sir.
... be a...
Sir, sir.
... number one...
No, sir. You have spoken, it is now time for someone else to speak. There will be no yelling from the audience, please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Baird, and I live at 1246 Meadowwood Drive. In this, I actually just began researching this issue with compost and biosolids mixed in with the composting, and just skimming the surface, because this is a new thing that I began reading into, there's definitely critics that claim biosolids are not as safe as governments and certain scientists or researchers want to claim. The EPA states that there is the possibility of adverse health impact on compost workers and nearby residents from inhalation of excessive numbers of mold spores. The EPA studies found that there's over 1,000 contaminants, lead, mercury, dozens of metals, flame retardants, steroids, pesticides, hormones, and antibiotics that can still be found in the composting materials. Allowing compost to cure for a period of time doesn't remove all the toxins, some even concentrate during the curing process, such as lead, mercury, flame retardant. Cornell Waste Management Institute in Ithaca said compost biosolids can cause increased concentrations of bioaerosols or organic dust, including live and dead bacteria, fungus, viruses, allergens, pollens, and plant fibers. Our family lives less than a quarter of a mile to this sewage facility, and all three of my children, including my husband and myself, go to an allergist. We're all on antihistamines, we've gone through allergy injection shots, weekly allergy injection shots. Recently, my daughter has been hospitalized twice for asthma attacks, she's been put on steroids and nebulizers. We own a nebulizer machine. She has autism, bipolar disorder, ADHD. All three of my kids have learning disabilities. All the research I says points to that these biosolids and these chemicals and stuff can cause these things. This is occurring in a residential setting where there's homes to the north, south, east, and west. It is directly in the middle of a neighborhood. We constantly smell the odor from this composting all the time. I've spoken to the neighbors at my cul-de-sac, and they have witnessed that they also continue to smell it. So the odor is a health concern. I spoke to someone at the DEC, and he says, "If you do smell it, then it means something isn't up to speed, that something is not being regulated or controlled the way it should, that it is a health risk. By smelling, it depreciates the value of our home for resale, and it's also a nuisance." So I am talking meeting with our pediatrician tomorrow to also show him, he knows our medical expenses, he knows how many, my children are on 11 medications that they have to get daily between my three kids. So I will be discussing these health issues with my pediatrician, explaining to him the evidence that I've researched with the effect of biosolids, and to see if we have a case to fight the government for allowing this to happen in Webster. I used to be proud to be a Webster resident. I also grew up in Webster off of Phillips Road, and Webster was a place worth living. I no longer have the pride to live in Webster because it has affected my family and my kids.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Diane Smith, and I live at 586 Morning Glory Drive, within the one-mile radius of the plant. I have two children and a husband, who in the last few years now has to take Singulair for asthma that he's never had before in his life. I'm also new to this game. I've recently found out about this issue. My son, in October, was treated for sinus issues, and my daughter just got off antibiotics for walking pneumonia. We moved here nine years ago because Webster was where life is worth living, and I still believe it is. The reason there aren't more people here is because they trust you. They trust that the board would take care of them. And I really hope that you hear this and that you do something, because people getting sick, all these stories, is very discouraging. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Linnia Muller, that's L-I-N-N-E-A-M-U-L-L-E-R. I live at 583 Webster Road, and I moved in about 11 years ago. I have, since I moved in, been dealing with severe allergies, and they've gotten worse and worse and worse over the years. The funny thing is, is that my allergies have gotten worse because I'm allergic now to more molds, which ironically, leaves carry a lot of. So this has been affecting me. I do not have children, thank God, because I would be worried sick about them. We are all taxpayers here. We expect to have a safe environment to live in. You are not providing that, plain and simple. I am a person that looks at the big picture and common sense, and what the big picture is and common sense is here, people are getting sick. If something's making somebody sick, you'll remove it. If you're not doing it, you're not doing the right thing, and you're harming people. And all I have to say is, if it was your families and your children, your loved ones, you would say, "Get me out of here." So put yourself in everybody's shoes here and say, "What would I do if this was my family and my loved ones?" That's all I need to say. And when we started, we said a pledge to the flag, right?
Yes.
We said injustice for all. We want justice.
Good evening. My name is Pat McDonald. Already heard from my wife. I live at 467 Holt Road in Webster. We actually went to school with a couple of your children over the years. So, you know, we run a business in this town. Like a lot of these people have said, you know, this is pretty disheartening, seeing something like this going on in the town that we grew up in, my father grew up in. It's sad that it's a village problem that's carried over to our town, to be quite honest. Even though you guys own the property, it's still the village transferring their load of crap into our town. So the reality of this is, is that they've already addressed a lot of the health concerns. I've had some of my own after dating my wife since '96 and being at that house almost every day since then. The reality of it is, is you guys are looking at what you've depreciated for all these people sitting here. You know, they have, one of their largest investments they'll ever make is their property and their home. And you want to buy that house that's sitting across from that stink pile? I don't think anybody here, if they had to unload these homes, would be able to sell it for full price. I mean, it's been on the news, it's been in the newspapers, it's been on this camera a couple different times, and a lot of people are talking about it. And the reality of it is, we have a couple people sitting here that are being told by their doctors they have to get out of their home for medical reasons, that are directly across the street from what you're bringing in. And the reality of it is, is you have a property that's probably worth about $400,000, and they're looking at having to move into one of their rental properties just to get out of there, because you guys can't move your pile of crap out of the front yard. So, I mean, how would you feel if you had to move out of your house and go move into a property you intended to be a rental property, just until you could maybe get some money out of it, which now you're going to have to disclose in any disclaimer, because we do live in New York? So, you know, now you have possible toxins in the air, and Lord knows what's contaminating through that crappy blacktop that all that stuff is sitting on, it's all cracked up. So, I mean, you put that on the disclosure statement and try to sell your house. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Katie Borchers, B-O-R-C-H-E-R-S. I live at 257 Circle Lane in Webster. My daycare provider is... My daycare provider is directly across the street from the water treatment plant. My children have been going there for almost, oh, excuse me, over 10 years. I have a 10-year-old, an eight-year-old, and a 16-month-old. Two of my children suffer from asthma and are on inhaled steroids and albuterol during the fall season to deal with that. My third child has been suffering from stomach pains for the last six to eight months that are unexplainable. In the weekend of November 6th, when the pile was at its worst smell, we came to my parents' house to have a visit and my middle child immediately started gagging in the front yard and throwing up and we had to leave the house and were unable to have that visit. And my doctor, who is Laura Jean Shipley of Panerma Pediatrics, recommends that my children do not come to that house while this situation is still occurring and as others have said, is looking into some research with the Health Department as to the effects that it's having on my children, which she feels is absolutely having an effect. I have two questions for the people at the front and the side of the room. My first question is, how is this regulated? My question is directly to the fact of not what testing you do, but who does that testing and who looks over your testing paperwork? Working in healthcare, I know that everything that I do is scrutinized by somebody above me, usually government joint commission regulations, and I was wondering who does that at the water treatment plant?
It's a sewage treatment plant, by the way.
Excuse me?
It's a sewage treatment.
Sewage. You're right. We should be very specific. It does involve sewage. Absolutely.
Human sewage.
Human sewage, right. So, Mr. Swingley, my question for you is, who is doing the testing and who is reviewing the testing material?
There are samples taken and they're sent to an independent lab.
Okay.
And a chain of custody filled out with each sample. It goes to the lab and the lab results come back and they're shared in part of our compost.
And does anybody come to visit the plant to do testing of their own or is it the employees of the plant who are doing the testing?
It's the employees of the plant that take the samples and the samples are to get tested too.
So the people who are taking the samples have a vested interest in keeping their job and keeping the plant running?
Honor system.
It's a little bit of a stretch, I think.
So, as a healthcare provider, I am scrutinized by someone other than myself, just as a FYI. The second question that I have is directly for Mr. Cahill. Mr. Cahill, with your...
Would you allow Mr. Swingley to please answer the question?
Of course, Mr. Swingley.
Yes, every time the DEC comes out, the DEC comes out and inspects the process, inspects, sees where we drew the, take the samples from, they see where the temperatures are and review all our records and the sample results. So it is regulating, we are watched over by the DEC.
So, if I understand the process correctly, the DEC is looking over your test results, but the results are collected by your staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
So that definitely concludes my feelings that those who are collecting and resulting are the ones who are directly affected by their position and their livelihood. Okay. Mr. Cahill, my next question is for you.
Yes, ma'am.
With your position of the town board, is it within your power or anybody sitting at the front table's power to be able to shut this plant down? Or stop it today until further investigation can occur? Is that within your power?
Yes, it is.
Composting.
Composting.
Composting. Is that within your power?
Within the board's...
So, is there any reason why the board sees the need to meet again after they were alerted of this a month ago, is my understanding? You've had a month to review, it's within your power to stop it, it's part of your responsibility and the positions you hold to discuss the concerns that come up from your members at these meetings?
Which we have and we have had discussions with the DEC. I have had discussions personally with the DEC and personally with Monroe County Health Department as a result of their inspections of the process and of the plant. And the DEC and the Monroe County Health Department both came to the same conclusion and they told me that there was nothing that we are doing that is not in accordance with our permit and the proper processes at the plant.
That is...
It has been my suggestion, excuse me, it has been my suggestion as a result of the concerns expressed that we conduct air quality tests at the sewage treatment plant. So that's, excuse me, sir. It's, that's not...
Sir, the emotions of the people in this room...
I understand, I understand that.
Please let me finish my sentence because I don't know if I'm getting my point across.
Okay.
The smell is there.
Douglas.
Sir, if you cannot control yourself, I will have to ask you, and this board will have to ask you to leave, and I don't want to do that. Just please, conduct yourself as a gentleman. A woman is speaking. If you would like to come up and speak when she is done, you're more than welcome to do so. Please.
So, my conclusion and my understanding is that you've discussed the facts, you know that your position of power exists, and in light of the conversations and the information that has been shared today with our recommendations from our family physicians and pediatricians that are telling us that we can't even go to these homes unless this stops, I would move to suggest, and I don't think I have that power, so I'm giving it to you, that you stop the composting, the sewage, whatever language this team wants to use until those testings are done to ensure the safety of those who visit and live in this area as well as this local school that is a few miles down the road. Do you have the power to do that today and can you understand the concerns of the people in this room to pause what is happening until further investigation is done?
We have that power.
So...
And we will have that discussion. And I've had discussions, a number of discussions with Jake regarding...
Sir, I believe this is a more emergent issue than waiting for another email discussion.
Okay. I'm trying to answer your question and I'd appreciate if, you know, you just let me talk for a second, okay? We've had discussions about this. We've come to the conclusion that we are going to do air quality testing as a result of the concerns. And I'll also, to be honest, I have never, until this year, and this is the third year I've been in this office, I have never once had a complaint from any resident regarding the composting at the sewage treatment plant, personally myself. I'm not saying that people have not complained or expressed concerns throughout the years periodically to Jake. I know that Jake has given me some history with respect to the cons and their concerns over the years, but this year as a result of when the branches were cut down, I think that exacerbated the problem. Now...
I think your lack of a response to a letter exacerbated the problem.
Let me finish, please. So, we need to conduct the test, the air quality test, and I believe the composting is done for the season anyways, correct?
It still stinks. It's still stink.
It's still covered. It's still, it still stinks.
Wait till it rains.
I smell that on my way here tonight.
Yes, I smell it.
Sir, have you visited the plant in the last few weeks to smell it?
Yes, I was there Sunday.
So then you absolutely know the smell we're talking about.
And I did not smell it. I absolutely did not. I parked the car there, there was a Westwind, and I did not.
Put it right out here and park there. I don't understand why you can't do that.
Right, right. I believe there's a couple separate issues that are going on here. One thing, you know, this is obviously very informative and everything. Every time we're having discussions, we're learning more specifics about what the issues are, what the problems are, and how we can try to address those. The mayor said we have been looking into doing air quality testing, not so we can say, "Hey, look, everything's fine." It's exactly the opposite. We can say, "What are the constituents of the air? What parts of the processes can contribute to those things being in the air and what can we change in the process to make sure that those things aren't present any longer?" That's some of the things that we're starting to do. One of the things we've got concerns and calls lately, which we haven't, very, very seldom, from people on Imperial Drive, Metalwood, LeBaron Circle and that area, that they're noticing odor. I drove down there tonight right before the meeting. It stinks. It stinks right along Majestic Lane, that portion of Imperial Drive. I drove back through down Wall Road as you're going down the hill.
Stafford Crescent?
Pardon me?
Stafford Crescent.
I drove down Stafford Crescent, honestly, I think I believe, I spoke to you the other day on the phone, I didn't smell it there this evening and that portion of it. But going down Wall Road, I definitely noticed an odor in there. John and I had been working on it and talking about it last night. He discovered, he went out after work, was driving around there later at night because that seems to be when people are describing the odors is more at night. I think when the air is heavier and things are sitting down and settling down into the lower areas.
When families are coming home for the evening.
There's drying beds down there. I don't know if you're familiar, there's a greenhouse, there's drying beds. We weren't able to close the doors on that right now. We typically don't pour the drying beds anymore since we got the centrifuge. We, I'm sorry?
They're so obsolete, drying beds.
Right, they are. And that's why we invested and we got a centrifuge because it's much more efficient and dries the sludge and they don't have to sit there.
Why can't you take that cake down to the village?
But, I'm getting that. The centrifuge, or excuse me, the drying beds are sitting there and they're open. I think when the wind's going through there, that's a smell that's present in that area. So we're working right now to try to close up those drying beds, make sure that they're tightening them up so that we don't have them. As I said, we normally don't pour them. Very rarely will we pour a drying bed now since we got the centrifuge. We had to do work on the digester cover. The digester creates gas and we had to drop the cover down on its rest so that we could work on it's not creating gas or coming out under a higher volume. I think there's a combination of things, but it's very informative, very helpful when we have discussions rather than yelling and screaming and accusations. And I'm learning a lot. I was not aware of anything about the mold spores with leaves and how they can contribute.
Job.
Okay. Can I, can I finish? Because we're all very, we're guessing about what things are and talking to people about what things might be and what they are. Several people raised concern about leaves or mold spores in the leaves and especially they brought up the children at Clem Road School. I have kids. I understand, I have concern for children as well. The guys that work at the plant have dedicated their life to the protection of the environment and their careers because that's what their job is. When you're talking about the leaves and I assure you're concerned, look at Google Maps, look at Monroe County Parcel Viewer. The town's leaf composting operation is about 1,820 feet away from Clem Road School. The village is 7,500 feet and downwind.
Sludge on it.
Right.
Right. Mixing it in the air.
Right. Well, they do mix it in the air, they mix it a lot more frequently than we do. We're talking about the mold spores that are in the leaves. That was a concern in causing asthma. That's 1,800 feet away upwind from Clem Road School. I'm just using the facts that you guys have presented to me. So I think we all have to take a look at this and work together to try to come up with a solution, not say, "I'm sick this..." We can look on the internet, if we look on WebMD, I'm pretty sure I got most of the symptoms of menopause. I know it's not possible. So I can attribute things to what's going on, to what's on WebMD. You can look at the internet.
You know, I'm trying to maintain my professionalism in this conversation and I feel as if you're not.
Pardon me?
I feel as if your comment is unprofessional.
I apologize for that. I'm trying to illustrate the fact...
Let's just get back to letting you guys speak because it's really not supposed to be bad for the conversation. And I do want to let you know that I've been on the board for three years and I missed the last meeting and this is pretty much the first time that I'm listening to and hearing all of this. So not, everybody's been in tune to this issue. So I'm glad that you guys are up here and I'm learning a lot tonight myself. So let's continue so everybody gets a chance to speak. I'd like to hear from everybody.
Can I ask you a question, Jerry? Were you aware of those certified letters that came in in August?
I've not seen anything that pertains to this.
Joe O'Neil, which I know personally, signed those and they got them.
Let's just...
They were distributed in everybody's mailbox.
Let's just continue, let's just continue to...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robbie Hodges. I live at 628 Webster Road, it's across from the plant. Mr. Cahill, I want you to know that we elected you and we trusted your wise decisions along with the board. You just mentioned that you were not aware of this. I'm sure that you guys meet and I'm not sure what you guys do in your meetings, but I'm a little bit surprised and upheld that this is the first time that you hear about this problem. I notice a sense of urgency from the residents of Webster. We elected you to represent us and I really want you to think about what decision are you going to take because it's going to affect the people's life in this town. I moved here 10 years ago. I have two kids. My oldest moved away. He had all kinds of physical problems. My wife is a witness. Every time he comes back to Webster, he gets sick, doesn't he, honey? He had to get shots when he was living in Webster. And I know, I mean, I don't have to tell you the chemicals affect people's lives. I mean, that's a given. So please, you know, listen to the people that live in Webster and just think of us, please. We love the place.
As do I.
Thank you.[1486.54][1486.54](applause)
I guess I'll get over here and say a few things too. I live at 1340 Clem Road.
What's your name, sir?
Bart LaFerno.
Thank you.
When it's, wind is blowing and it smells from there, it smells like a dead animal. Also, where you're doing it over there in the parking lot, is there any bladder underneath that? Groundwater contaminant leaching in there? Parking lot's old. I know the catch basin is probably old. Why don't they just take the leaves over to the village and do them there? They don't put sewage on them there and send the cake down to Philip Road and the sludge to Philip Road? I mean, the plant is old and it's an industrial waste because of the town and xerox, it's heavy metals, all sorts of stuff, not good for us. I mean, come to some concession.[1551.83][1551.83](applause)
Welcome, Richard Fraser. I live at 592 Webster Road and this is addressed to Mr. Cahill. On Saturday, you and I, we did meet. I don't think you remember.
Yes, I do.
We met in there and I spoke to you about it. You said a fence was put up and that wasn't suitable for my con and I understand that. And you said you didn't have to do anything and you wanted to plant our varieties. Well, I live across the street and I don't think that's good, okay? I don't have any children, but I think what should be brought up here now is maybe Eric Brockovich and PG&E. PG&E lost millions. You said about money, nothing compared to what Farachi and Lang could do. If you guys want a lawsuit and you want to do it, you're headed for it, okay? This is the last meeting and I'm concerned about this, okay? And if we have to, we'll hire them. We'll hire them. If that doesn't scare you, I don't know what will. And the only other thing I got to say is, where do you fellowship? Can you answer that question? Where do you fellowship? You don't. You don't. May God bless you and rest your soul.
Thank you, sir.[1632.54][1632.54](applause)
Are there any test wells on that side at all?
Any, there's no wells on that side.
Test wells, water test wells for ground contaminants?
No.
No?
Is that correct? No.
All right. I'm 29 weeks pregnant, so I'm going to get through this a little, as less emotional as I can. I live at 29 Alvin Glen. My name is Natalie Dubois. D is David, U capital B-O-I-S. I have an 11-month-year-old little girl. I was fortunate enough that I was pregnant, living outside of Webster for a year, and I just recently moved back to be near my family. And my doctor and I can't figure out why my nine-month-old in October started having this chronic cough. And so tomorrow, I get to take her back to the doctors for the sixth, seventh, eighth time and they're going to draw some more blood and figure out what they can do for her. And I am so nervous about my baby son because I, of course, go to visit my family, who I love very much, and who knows what's doing to my baby? I'm breathing this in. I don't care about the smell. I mean, it stinks, it smells like disgusting sewage and dead animals and we're all subjected to this, but what am I breathing in? What's my baby breathing in? I don't smoke. I won't even take Tylenol during my pregnancy. I don't get my yard treated for dandelions because I don't want to breathe that in. And when I see that my beautiful neighbor's yards get their treated, my husband says, "Don't go outside. Don't breathe that in. Won't spray chemicals." Here I am, breathing this in because I have to take my daughter there while I work two days a week and she has to be watched by her grandparents because that's the only people I trust her with. I'm a good mother. But how good of a mother am I now that I have to take her right across the street from the sewage plant and my child has to breathe this in? You live in Webster?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many miles away from the sewage treatment are you?
Probably two.
Two miles? You of course don't have a smelt this smell.
No.
I called the DEC. I want to know who, who's friends with the DEC here because they hung up on me. I didn't swear at them, I didn't raise my voice to them, I just said, hey Jerry, what can we do to fix this? Jerry hangs up on me because he says I'm not treating him with respect because I said, who are you friends with over at the sewage treatment plant? He hangs up on me. So, then I have to get a phone call from his supervisor Wade, who says, that's not how we handle things. I said, Wade, well, when are they going to do the testing? Are you guys going to test the sewage? Are you going to test the, the air, the, the soil? And he says, oh, well, you know, we, we, we won't do that unless we know it's causing health, health problems. So, the DEC is not testing this, verbatim on the phone. They're not testing unless we have proven issues that there's health problems.
Now, can I ask you a quick question, do you mind?
Sure.
They don't test for air, but we, they do supply, we do, you get, they do get the results from the testing of the compost.
Oh, they get the results, but they don't test. They get the results.
Correct.
They're not doing their own testing.
The crust, the, the testing is done by.
So, they have to take the word of the lab and the results from their workers, right, correct. So, that's my point, is why isn't DEC going in to test it themselves? We're trusting other individuals and they're supposed to be the middle ground, they're supposed to be nitty gritty in there and they're not doing that. So, obviously, you guys, I mean, politicians or what have you paid by the, the taxpayers, you all are buddies. And that's why nothing's getting done. And that's why when I use the word negligent, you all are being negligent. They brought this to you just recently, a month ago, you're still not shutting it down, which means you're being negligent. And if this chronic cough from my daughter is anyway associated to that plant, what, what were we saying, lawsuit?
We're going to call them.
Yep. So.
Hi, my name's Doug Borchers and I live at two fifty-seven Circle Lane. I apologize for my outburst. I wasn't.
Thank you very much, sir.
Anyways, just a quick question for you. How hard is it to move the pile or sewage? Why can't you guys take it to another piece of town property? I'm sure you own a lot of it or village property. Why can't you just truck it out there and have it away from everybody else? I mean, is it that hard? If you already have to truck it to the parking lot, how much more work is it to truck it to another piece of property that you guys own?
That, that was suggested at the last meeting.
But, okay, go ahead.
It was suggested, why don't, can't we take the, the compost and do the process at the wellfield property? Problem is, the same conditions exist over there, um, as it does, there's, there's a residential area over there too. So, that's not really, um, a viable answer to the issue.
You're not concerned about shutting it down now, but you don't want to go to the.
Then, then what if you just?
You wouldn't be able to put the sludge down there either.
Then, then what if you just?
I'm trying to answer, I'm trying to answer your question and I appreciate it if I, if, if I would be allowed to do that, I really appreciate it. So, we, we are going to have a discussion on what we're going to do with respect to the, to the composting. I greatly appreciate the education and the information that we've received tonight, um, from the audience and primarily the town residents.
The other question I have is, you can dump the leaves there, that's fine. We'll dump them another pile somewhere else, but what's the point of putting sewage on it? I mean, are you making that much money off of?
We're saving money.
Like, how many trucks do you have coming and using it? Like, do you guys regulate, like, how many contractors or how many, or where you guys put all this, you know, processed material? I mean, I know the town might use it for.
Hmm? They're not selling it, nobody wants it.
Okay, but how many people are actually coming to get it? Do you mark down, like, when you have a town landfill, they have somebody that sits there and marks down, okay, this guy came from here, he's taken so much and this and that. Do you guys actually see who comes in or how many trucks worth?
Yeah, sometimes people come and get it. John can speak to this probably better because he's right down at the plant and sometimes people come and get it in little totes if they have just a little bit of stuff to do around the garden. Sometimes they'll come and get it in truckloads. Yeah, I want to.
Then, me, you guys?
We'd, we'd appreciate it if, if you're going to speak, if you'd come up to the podium.
So, either way, I think trucking out would be a good spot if you have a piece of property somewhere. If you don't, I would say just stop putting sewage on it, leave it alone. There's really no point in it. It's not making you guys any money.
It's not making us, it's saving us money.
Saving you money, but I mean, but also in the same sense, though, it's just creating a problem, that's all, I don't know.
Well, a point was made to me by, uh, by someone recently that, you know, perhaps it's something to be considered is, is that, um, you know, it's not always about money. Now, would it cost the village taxpayers, uh, more money in taxes? Absolutely, if we didn't do this. But we have, but let me finish, please. But we have a room of concerned residents from the town that we need to take into consideration. Even though the town residents don't pay village taxes, we have some valid concerns here and we need to have a serious discussion about what we do going forward.
We pay sewer tax.
Okay. For the town, not for the village. The village, the village taxpayers pay no sewer rate, it's included in their village taxes.
But the sewage goes down there from the village and we have to be, the, the outback we get.
After, after, after it's been treated.
Yeah, but there's, there's no reason to put it on top of the leaves. I mean, you can treat it in the plant, that's fine, that's what a sewage treatment plant's for.
After it's been treated, you've still got a landfill, cake, waste product, you can't just dump it somewhere.
No, it would, would have to go to the landfill if it wasn't, if the bio solids were not composted, which is a practice is being utilized throughout this country and municipalities all over the country. It would have to go to the landfill. That's the only other alternative to the bio solids, which would cost, which, which, which would cost the village, the village taxpayers, not the town, the village taxpayers, an additional fifty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars a year.
What's the biggest piece of property you have other than that one in the village?
Would be the wellfield property.
Where?
The wellfield, we have forty-three acres at the wellfields.
Is there a reason why you can't go out there and, but truck it out? I mean, there's truckloads, I mean, it's like a garbage truck, throw it in the bag and take it out there.
Honestly, as Doug was talking, Doug, right, yeah, as Doug was talking, it's, one of the things that I'd like to do is research other areas that are close. Perhaps, I mean, obviously, we're looking for alternatives all the time, we're looking for solutions to things. If we can investigate the other alternatives or areas that might be close, it might, you know, be a happy medium, the best of both worlds. Obviously, the plant's been there eighty years, but the community around it has evolved.
Has grown significantly.
Yeah.
The compost, they're there twenty years.
Right, yeah, it's been.
It's been out there at the platform, right?
But it don't hold, and it was.
That's one of the things, I'd like to. I'd like to try to get from the board is investigate the, you know, potential different areas, maybe even, uh, you know, you know, some costs in areas and see what it would be, what the potential is. Is there another area? I think someone just mentioned xerox, there's a large area over there. Is there a possibility, um?
Well, I, personally, I, I, and I'm not speaking for the board, I, I would be in favor of looking at alternative sites, given the proximity of the houses and the residents and the concerns that have been expressed here this evening, um, to, A, look to another site to do the composting process. And I would strongly urge a, an air quality test right now to see what's there. We're not turning the compost, we're not, it's covered. So, the current conditions, um, I think should be tested no matter what. Even if we move it and compost it at a different site, you're still going to have potential, and I don't want to use the word pathogens, but I want to use the word airborne particles that need to be analyzed. So, we should do it now and then consider doing it when we, they perhaps turn a pile so you have the real world conditions. And we should also consider perhaps just stop doing the composting altogether and. And I'll, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm not saying we're going to stop doing the composting, but what I'm going to say is based upon some, all the, the concerns that have been expressed here today, it's incumbent upon us to discuss that. The possibility of stopping it and the possibility of moving it to a different site.
I think every, every indication that we have, from the regulations that we have, um, is that it's, you know, it's a regulated process, we're following what we're supposed to be doing. But if there's additional concerns, you know, we've always tried to be, you know, good neighbors around the plant. And the best compliment we get is when someone says, we didn't even know there was a plant there. You know, we've lived here all this time, we didn't even know there was a sewage treatment plant there. But I think there is a happy medium and there's something, I'd love to investigate, different areas, see if there's a spot where we might be able to continue. Because I think, you know, the way that the DEC likes to see things in the way that the, the whole world is, everybody's going green and trying to not fill landfills and trying to recycle things. And it's a sound practice and it's a sound, uh, practice in what we're doing right now. But maybe the, the location, obviously, uh, to everyone here, the location might not be the ideal spot or more than likely isn't the ideal spot. So, if we can investigate and see if there's another option or another area where we can do it, I'd be happy to, to, to pick that up and see what we can do.
So, how long is it going to take?
Let me, let me, let me just, let me just.
I just want to address this background.
Could you, could I be allowed just one second, please? So, I, I was on the phone last night from seven to eight-thirty when my daughter called and says, I was late picking her for basketball practice with three residents from the town. And, and very, very good conversations, the people I spoke to expressed their concern, they were very polite. But one, one woman that I spoke to on the phone last night, I guess, and I believe she spoke here tonight, really impacted me, um, when she was talking about her three kids. I believe one of her children is autistic and that she spoke about their respiratory problems. That was you. Very, very nice, very enlightening conversation and, 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 you know, having three kids at home and, and two kids that, that have respiratory issues. My oldest daughter, her, our oldest daughter Bren has always had respiratory problems and we don't live, never lived near the sewage treatment plant. We live, we lived in Rochester, okay? But she's allergic to just about everything under the sun. So, what we did find out that she's, one of the things that hits her is dust mites. So, there's certain things that affect people, so, but the point I'm trying to make is, you know, during that conversation, I, I, I also understand and, and empathize with how you feel about your kids. I mean, every, everyone here has kids, we all, we care about our kids, we love our kids. We're not going to put our kids in a position that would endanger them health-wise. And that's the point I tried to make when I was discussing the fact that we need to have air quality tests on there that we're not required to do. We're not required, the DEC does not require, the Monroe County Health Department does not require us to do that. But it's incumbent upon us, in my belief, that we do that to find out if there is some problems out there. Because we are complying with the permits that we have been issued, they have, the process has been audited by the DEC twice, the Monroe County Health Department once. But is, do we need to take it a step further? In my belief, we do. Because I'd rather be proactive and find if there is something there than not. So, that is one of the things we are, it's not a discussion, we're, we are going to do that. Along with have a discussion as where, where do we go forward with this? And that's, that's attributed to the people in this room and the people that have called and our responsibility as elected officials, in my opinion. And if there's a differing opinion, you know, I, I think everybody would be in agreement with that. But Jake makes a great point that, you know, this is educational for everybody to have this discussion. Thank you for letting me speak.
Absolutely. There's just three things. Your plant goes unregulated by the massive amounts of regulations that is taken by wastewater treatment plants because it is one of the only in New York State that has a speedies permit that is in conjunction with another plant. The town of Webster and other individual wastewater treatment plants process their own sewage, industrial chemicals, and then come under scrutiny from DEC for every little item at their plant before they discharge that effluent flow out into the lake. The village has a great program here. They're allowed to take in whatever they want. Their sludge is not maintained, their pro, their machinery is overlooked because all DEC cares about is that effluent flow. And that is what goes to the town of Webster and is discharged out into the lake. And that is why this is such a big problem here and not in other places because there's no set regulations. This is one of a few plants that actually can get away with this. We're talking about green. It's actually greener to take your human sewage-treated sludge to a landfill. They actually ask for it. These are from wastewater treatment plant personnel that I have spoken with because they use the methane gas to break down the garbage that's already there. They ask for it, that's why they usually give discounts based on quantity because they want it. And they also know that this is a hazard. They don't want this out there lying around. Van Lair treats this as a hazardous chemical with hazmat suits and washing of vehicles. The last thing is, is we're talking about permits that are in place and how you abide by them and how Monroe County has been here in DEC. Just because an individual identity has a permit does not make it right or acceptable in modern society. Let's talk about vehicle emission standards. Have made leaps and bounds compared to the acceptable and legal emissions of the nineteen seventies and eighties. Now, your vehicle costs twice as much today than it did twenty years ago because of people like us standing up and saying, this isn't right. And just because you have a permit to do it, doesn't mean you're doing the right thing. So, please, look at these things and know that this might be the starting point to change the whole country to what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Fritz Hamel, forty-six, Kircher Park, Village Webster. I believe the village has done this for nineteen-plus years, almost twenty if not more. There's been issues, the issue's been taken care of. The issues are being taken care of now. Everybody's children has asthma, this and that. I got children in Georgia that have asthma. They don't live anywhere near a treatment plant, he was born with it. What's the village doing wrong now? Because they put sewage and make topsoil? They make a product for the village residents and the town residents to buy. There's town residents that use it every year.
Okay, you tell me, I live fifty feet.
Excuse me. Whoa, 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 whoa. First of all, let's, let's, let's just, let's stop. Mister, let, just, listen. The purpose of the public portion is for the, the public to address the board, okay? We don't want to get into a discussion with who's ever at the podium with, 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 with people here.
Okay, I'm, I apologize.
So, if you guys would like to have a discussion outside this meeting room, that, that'd be fantastic. But I'd just like, just, you know, the purpose of the public portion is to allow the public to address the board, so.
It's not been a problem for nineteen years.
Right.
They have minimum complaints. This year, they get a complaint, they get a sign put up. Now, I know in the village you need a permit for a sign. I don't know if you do in the town. That might be something to look into. You need a permit, put a sign up in your front yard in the village. Do you in the town? I don't know.
Are you asking a question?
I don't know. He's asking me, he's asking me a question. Okay.
We'll speak later if you'd like, I'd love to.
All right, all right.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Evening. My name's Chris King, I live at twelve forty-two LaBaron Circle. Um, great, thanks for having me out here, appreciate this opportunity. I appreciate all the voices, I really didn't know much about this. I've lived in Webster while at our current address for eight years. I grew up in Buffalo and Clarence. I like Rochester a lot, I like Webster, it's a great community. Um, we have two kids, a five-year-old, two-year-old and, uh, one in the hopper, so we're excited for number three coming.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. I really appreciate what the village does, we just went to the parade. It was a lot of fun, I'm assuming that's on the village's dime, there's a lot of great things that happen here. And I don't know why this year, you know, over the nineteen years that I've heard, that I've begun to really smell it, I appreciated your comment that you guys have taken the time to drive through the communities that have had a concern about it. It smells like mold, it smells like mildew. I don't normally smell it, I smelled it for probably a couple of weeks, thought I had something in my yard from the leaves, you know, and then I began to hear the concerns about this. It's concerning, I've got a wife who has asthma, I don't say it's as a result of this, but I'm sure it doesn't help. I'm sure it has a, a pretty severe impact. Um, I'm very concerned for her health, our kids' health. Obviously, a baby is very subject as it's in the womb to the environment that it's in. I have noticed, you know, and these are just my general concerns, right, but I have noticed that within our community, within our neighborhood, houses were going pretty quick. And it's just having a very negative impact, right? As the houses, as this news started to come out, I didn't even know it was really being published, but I watched, I like watching real estate, I watched the houses just hit a wall. Houses aren't selling in our, in our neighborhood. And I think there's a lot of valid concern around the depreciation, at least in the short term, for what's going on. People are concerned, I, I honestly, if I could, would relocate if I had the chance now because it's just something I don't want to subject my wife and my children to. Um, I'm not a radicalist, I'm very analytical on everything I do and I'd love to see all the data behind this, what you guys have done. I have full confidence that you guys are doing everything that you think you should. I am concerned that this year, that, as you said, if you cut down a bunch of trees, you, you opened up some pipe holes, right? You, you gave some air, some room to move.
No, they cut all the lower branches down like six feet, which opened up. No, they cut all the lower branches down like six feet, which opened up for the windfall.
You created an opportunity for air to get out, right? So it is what it is, but it's obviously getting out. It gives a greater spread of whatever's coming out. Um, it just raises concerns. So I don't have the data. I'd love to have it to say, I appreciate that you guys are going to look into it. But I do come here as a concerned person within one of the roads that you've driven down. You said you smelled it. I smell it. Um, I really smell it now because I'm paying attention to it. And I still smell it, uh, even though you guys are, you know, it's not actively being done right now. So it's, it's a concern. Um, and I would really honestly like appreciate the opportunity for it to be stopped. I know you guys are at the tail end of it, but to really be evaluated. And one thing that really kind of pricks me at the end of it is if you're, I don't have a problem with the village. You gotta do what you gotta do with your stuff. You know, everybody jokes around, like we support New York City, the rest of the state. Um, but it is a little concerning when you take something from one area and you put it in somebody else's backyard and people have a negative impact from it. Whether or not it's, you know, all data, a data-based, I have full confidence that there's issues that are happening in people's lives as a result of it. But you're inhibiting people's lives, you know, in another area by taking a product from one area and putting it in another area. Because you don't have the room to do it here, and that's understandable. But there's a certain unfairness to that as well, so. So I appreciate this. It's very informative for me. I thank everybody who's brought up their concerns in the community. Um, I wouldn't really have known about it. I, I would have thought it was just a nasty odor and I would have kept wondering what it was. Um, and I appreciate all the time the people's invested into, uh, to do the research, to, to bring it here. And I appreciate your guys' time as you get educated on it, on the effort you guys are going to do to look for new locations. I think it'll do a lot for everybody. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Richard Waldor, twenty Elm Street. Obviously, I live in the village. The smell from that doesn't bother me. But I lived for many years behind the Burger King. We all have small problems with smell. Now, that's gone, but there's a fast food restaurant next door to where it used to be. At eleven-thirty every morning, they start cooking onions for the noon rush. So for the next two hours, my backyard and the neighborhood smells like onions.
Mr. Waldor?
Okay, now, as far as.
All right. Mr. Waldor, please, please address the board.
Yeah, as far as your sewer sludge goes and the compost, I have a nice raised garden in my backyard that grows wonderful vegetables and very good food that I use all the time. Made one hundred percent of Webster Village compost. And I don't know if anybody here has ever heard of a, a common product you can buy at most lawn and garden stores called Malorganite. It's a five-four-oh, I believe is the formula fertilizer, made from one hundred percent sewer sludge from the city of Milwaukee.
Sir, all right. Let's, let's not have the cross-talk, please. Please.
Hello, my name is, uh, Richard Reddese. I live on Surry Garden Way. I moved into the house in two thousand and eight. And I felt fine before I moved in. And, uh, I had an operation on my neck because of the lymph nodes I had. And the doctor said that, uh, the character was not caused by smoking cigars. So I lived there since two thousand and eight, and my wife and me have been tired the whole time we've been living there. Now, my wife does not smoke, and I go out in my yard all the time. I'm outside more than she is. But I can sleep fifteen hours a day and I'm still tired. And the other night, I called my wife outside and I says, "Do you smell this smell? It smells like some kind of a perfume smell." And I often wondered, uh, part of the problem is, is that being sucked in by the air conditioning? If we have air conditioning on, is that contaminating the whole house? My wife blames it on the house. She says, "Well, maybe there's mold in the house. That's why we're so tired all the time." But I, I believe it's from the plant myself. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eric Reynolds, sixty-four, Kircher Park. I'm going to switch it up a little bit here. Um, so I have a, a couple of questions. The, uh, the village, um, water system is still owned by the village. Is that correct? It's just being leased out by, to the water authority? We own the, uh, the meters and the house meters and?
I believe that they own the meters or replacing a lot of the meters throughout the village.
Okay. Um, why, does, do you know why they're replacing those meters?
That would be a question for them, sir.
Um, because, uh, based on, on the information I've gotten from the Monroe County Water Authority, the, the village owns the meters or own the meters. Um, it's, uh, in, in, in the information that, that they gave to you on the drafts of, uh, uh, the retail conversion that states that, uh, in the notes that the, the water meters belong to the village. So.
Actually, they, they spent, I think, probably several months changing all of our, our meters over to new meters, I believe.
Well, okay, so, so.
I know they changed mine, my house.
Right.
They changed, they did change.
They, they've changed most, most meters in the village. Um, so, um, based on, on this, uh, retail conversion agreement, the, the water meters belong to the, uh, to the Village of Webster. This is the, uh, it's right, right here where they, where they want the Village of Webster. So since those, those meters are the Village of Webster's, um, Monroe County Water Authority doesn't own them, but they've switched them out and they've taken those meters. So they took our perfectly good meters and, and switched them out with new meters. Um, we didn't get those meters back, did we? Jake, did we get those meters back from?
But keep in mind that the meters that we put in approximately ten, twelve years ago, they have a battery. They send the transmitter, there's a transmitter and sends a signal so they can drive by and read them. And that battery has a, it's a.
Right, so you can change the battery.
Yeah, there's a particular light and perhaps, I don't know, there was this model. Perhaps it's easier to change the meter when you have access to the house and, and the battery and they might rehab the meter. I don't know what they do with it.
I find that would be hard to believe, but it's, you know. Right, they had to be lead-free before they were, I'm sorry. They had to be, yeah, I, I.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's okay.
When those meters were switched out, the, the lead-free, uh, uh, thing was, was in place.
No, it was not.
Uh, nineteen ninety-six.
No, they changed the lead rule. In fourteen is when they changed the, the lead rules again about what the requirements were for.
But, uh, so, so the meters that, that we are, we had, the manager meters, um, should have been returned to us one way or the other.
Listen, again, please. This is the public portion of the meeting. Anyone in this meeting is allowed to come up and speak for five minutes. They can speak on any topic that they would like to speak to. Obviously, uh, most of the res, or most of the town residents here were speaking regarding their concerns with the sewage treatment plant. Mr. Reynolds, who is a village resident, is speaking to a different topic that he is concerned about this evening. So thank you very much for your patience. I just wanted to clarify for everybody in the room. Again, the rules with respect to the public input portion of the meeting. So thank you for your patience. And I apologize for the interruption.
No problem, no problem. Uh, the, uh, the, the issue that, that I find is that those meters are ours or were, were supposed to be ours. The Monroe County Water Authority has switched out those meters with their own meters. And now, uh, if we were to, uh, switch over, back over to our own water at some time, we would have to pay for those new meters. But we never got back the original meters that we, we were, uh, that we own. So, uh, based on in, information I got by going on eBay and seeing what they're selling for, those meters are selling for about a hundred dollars a piece. Um, the Monroe, uh, Monroe County Water Authority has taken our meters, thrown them into a scrap bin, and they weigh about four-point-five pounds a piece, and they've sold them for eighty-eight cents a pound. So if we were to have gotten those meters back for the nineteen-hundred-and-forty customers, uh, that we have in the village that were, uh, affected by that, that's, uh, if, if we were to get a hundred dollars a piece for them, that's a hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars. The, the Monroe County Water Authority has sold them for seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and forty cents. I, I find that ridiculous. I find that absolutely ridiculous. We should have had the option of doing something with those meters. There is no reason that they should ever have scrapped those meters. They should have come back to us and we should have been able to decide whether we were in it. The, the other thing that, that really, uh, ticks me off is that the Monroe County Water Authority is actually threatening residents of the village with shutting off their water if they don't let them steal our, our, our meters. I got the letters right here that they're sending out. This is, this is, this is what they're sending out to people if they don't let them change their meters. Here's the, here's the shut-off. There's a shut-off notice. There, there's three different letters there. I mean, it, it's, it's absolutely boggling that, that we made this agreement with, with, uh, Monroe County Water Authority. I mean, they're, they're, they're taking us for all, all we're worth. And that, and the, I mean, every, every Monroe County Water Authority, um, customer should be concerned that they're spending this kind of money to put in new meters in replace of perfectly good meters. And then the Webster Village residents are getting screwed twice because we're not even getting our own meters back. I, 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 I hope that, uh, the board will look into this because there, there's something wrong. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Obviously, I'm going to look into this.
Mm-hmm. I, I. What I can do is I can forward you all the FOIL information that, that I got from them.
Sure. Uh, I, I see here in the first sentence, it says, "Our records indicate that we have sent you six letters requesting you to schedule an appointment to replace the meter at the above-referenced property." Do you have the six previous letters? I only see three here.
So, um, I'm, I'm sorry, um. They didn't send me those letters. Those, those are the sample letters that they sent me when I foiled the information on that. Those are the letters that they're sending out. I know some residents have gotten, um, shut-off letters.
Yeah, I just, I just, I, I'd like to, I'm just talking to you. This is a sample letter? This wasn't sent, you're telling me?
No, 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 that wasn't.
This was not sent to you?
It wasn't sent to me. It's a sample letter that they, it's their form letter that they're sending out to village residents if, if they don't abide by.
Do you have any correspondence actually that the Monroe County Water Authority sent directly to you that you could share with us?
Not me, but I think I can get, uh, I can get a copy of a shut-off notice that was sent to a resident.
Oh, because I was under the impression that they were sending these letters to shut you off?
No, 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 no. They haven't, they haven't yet. They might. I'll let you know.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll forward you that information on the, on the FOILs. Thank you.
Mr. Alder?
Peter Alder, fifty-nine Dunning Avenue. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I'd like to add a little information to Eric's about the meters, but I'm one of those people they sent the shut-off notice to. So I'd be happy to give you why.
Okay.
Um, so what I did is I put together a little booklet here of the information, that some of the information Eric talked about. Um, the, uh, some of this information is a little, is some of it's approximate because there's a few things we don't have firm knowledge on. Like I looked back in the budgets from two thousand and four, five, and six and tried to get a total cost, the amount of money we spent on the meters originally. And I don't have good notes on how much each meter actually cost the village at the time. Um, so we, so I looked at the budget lines, tried to put that together. Uh, so I have to do a little bit more investigating and see if I can get those actual definitive numbers for you. We also found out that in Schedule B, apparently the Monroe County Water Authority may have purchased some meters that the village had in its possession. So, um, that actually gave us a number to work with as well. Of course, that's two years old, so there's probably, probably been a little bit of devaluation since that time. It does appear that, um, it doesn't appear that the Monroe County Water Authority do anything particularly wrong because they're allowed to swap out the meters according to section two-two of the re, of the retail lease agreement. But the problem is that in the process of switching them out, we're not getting our meters back. And that's the thing that, that's the thing that we just don't understand. I mean, clearly, they're the village's meters because there's documentation from the village that says in the dra, in the draft statements that say they're Village of Webster meters. So the question really becomes, why didn't they come back to the village, even if they were scrapped, to actually have the village dispose of them and take advantage of the money from the meters that were originally purchased? So I, I, I tried to address some of those questions there to you, and I, I appreciate the fact you're going to look into it. I hope you will, um, and to see, because there may be.
In fairness, I don't have the contract right in front of me.
Yeah, there, well, there also may be a piece of this puzzle that we're missing, but I didn't, but we didn't see any pieces that look like we're missing them. So perhaps you can take a look at that and, um, and see if there's a possibility of recouping some of the original value of those meters because they were a substantial cost, and Jake swore that because he was on the board at the time with me. Uh, there were substantial costs to the water department, um, to, uh, purchase those meters in the first place. Okay, thank you.
Are they, are they charging the residents for the replacement meters?
No, but they, but they wouldn't because they're their meters. Remember, we'd have to, in order for us to, sorry, but in order for us to, we'd have to buy them at the end of the process even so. So they wouldn't charge us to swap out the meter. So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll most certainly look into that and give a call to, uh,
Okay.
Mr. Metzger of the Water Authority. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak before I close the, uh, public portion of the meeting and move into village board business?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
First of all, again, um, we've talked about a couple of different options for various sewer treatment plants.
Right.
Do you have a, a timeframe for air quality testing in mind?
Yes.
Identified vendors, anything along those lines?
We've been going to Columbia, Columbia Analytical, it is. Uh, we actually talked to a couple, a couple of different places. Um, one of them was Columbia Analytical, and I'm trying to remember the ALS Environmental. Um, and it was the ALS one that looked like they'd do more of a comprehensive. One of them said, you know, we'd expect to find maybe ammonia and hydrogen sulfide or something like that in a compost operation. So that's what they wanted to test for. And I said, "I don't really want to test for what we'd expect to see. I want to test for a wide spectrum to see what there might be."
What's that?
Because all the research that I, you know, began doing is that certain portions of the process can contribute to an odor. Um, and if you can identify what's causing that odor or what's, what's present there, you can kind of trace it back. You know, as one of the gentlemen talked about analytical or, you know, analyzing the data, we can trace it back and try to change that portion of the process. Um, one of the things too, I'd start, you know, we started touching on is even the polymer that might cause an odor when it's, uh, when it's heated, breaks down. Obviously, the compost piles get up to about a hundred-and-seventy when they start, when we, when we first mix them in there. They get quite warm, which is, you know, required, um, for pathogen reduction when we're, when we're forming the pile. So it could be something as simple as changing the polymer that's used. So it's the kind of things that we're looking at going to, but I think the first thing we wanted to do when we discussed was trying to get an air test, but we wanted a comprehensive one. So we're looking for things we wouldn't expect to see.
And what you're saying makes sense.
Yeah.
What I'm, want to be aware of is the expected timeframes and steps and press communication plan that we're sharing that information with the audience at large to be aware of, I guess, the progress or do we have any air quality checks in place for both the current state and the next time? state and the next time that we turn the piles? Because it was stated, we want to have that ready. I don't know when the plan is for that. I believe I'm identifying a vendor.
I believe they don't turn the piles down, if you could help me out with this. When is the next time that you would be turning the piles?
Now, we probably will turn them again until, probably May. Once, once the weather gets a little warmer and the piles dry out, and then we'll start turning them again.
So, at that point in May, we most certainly want to have an air quality test done. The same air quality test that would be done right now to show what the conditions are without the leaves being turned, which obviously is going to put more, whatever is in those leaves will make it airborne, which is not now. And on another note, we discussed potentially moving the compost to a different site. And in this modern era of instant communications, obviously, there's people at home interested in this discussion that we're having tonight. And there is a resident who lives in the town of Webster who has 40 acres that has, has just texted me recently, like, within the last 10 minutes, to say, "I may have 40 acres available that you may be able to look into doing your composting there." So, I just wanted to give you that information that came across my, my phone here in the last 10 minutes. So, we definitely want to be doing something, and we should have, I would, I would assume that by the next board meeting, we could have, we should have something with respect to the air quality test and when they're gonna be done. And I, we will be having a lengthy conversation at the next workshop, which is the 1st of January, regarding, you know, what direction we're gonna take with respect to this process. Jen Rickfett. Does anyone else have any, any other input?
I would like to say something. After listening to all of this, I really don't have anything equal to do the right thing.
Okay.
Okay. It's pretty much written in stone that I'm gonna have to move because all the air testing in the world isn't gonna stop the problem. The problem has to be removed. The composting over there makes no sense. To save $50,000, $100,000, that doesn't mean anybody. The health of my wife and my grandkids mean a lot more than that. You guys can mix all the sewage you want, because I gotta go.
Our doctor won't let us take our children there.
You guys, you guys win. I've been listening to these fixes for 20 years. In the 90s, Mrs. Bernard had hundreds of people trying to put a stop to this, because it doesn't make any sense to mix sewage with compost, and then you spread it all over the village? Most of the village residents don't even know there's sewage in their compost, and you're gonna test the air now? Great.
Anyone else want to say anything on the board?
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
My name is Douglas Locke. I live at 596 Webster Road, right across the street from this plant. Up until about three months ago, we really didn't have any issues. But this last round of, of composting, and once the, the bottom six feet of the trees were cut down.
Right.
Everything kind of just moved over. Just get moves right into where you are. Well, I wasn't gonna get up and say anything tonight, but I figured I might as well go on the record. I want to thank Mike for doing all the work, you know, all the people that have done the research and stuff, because I haven't done any, but I'm going to. My wife has severe allergy issues, problems with her sinuses that have not gone away since we moved to Webster. Now, we've only lived in Webster since 2007. So, we bought the house 2007, we've lived there since, and have enjoyed it up to this point. But I'm gonna do some checking because my son just went through a battery of tests for some headaches that we didn't know what the heck was going on. Why is he getting headaches? Because they just started. So, they couldn't, they couldn't pinpoint anything. Well, I didn't have this information at the time, but I do now. So, I'm gonna go back to the doctors and see what they say. I'm concerned about the health of my family. I'm concerned about the health of my neighbors. I'm concerned about my health, and I'm also concerned about the cost of my, the resale value of my house. I'm not gonna get the price I got, I paid for my house. Okay? I gotta admit, when I bought that house, I looked across the street and I said, "Oh, my God." But I bought it anyway because I talked to people. They said there wasn't that big of a problem with the smell. Wasn't any smell at all. We didn't have any problems, not until this year. Okay? So, this year, and with all the news reports and everything, I believe whoever said they checked on the prices of the houses, I'm gonna start doing that, too. So, expect some repercussions, okay? It's got to go. It cannot stay there. That's the bottom line.
Again, I want to thank everybody, like, appreciate what you did, but I don't think it's also fair to say that we haven't done anything or aren't doing anything, and people have been complaining for 20 years. Like I said, you have my attention. I'm gonna look into this. It's new to me. I've only been on this board in my third year. And I, you know, I'll make a promise to you guys that I will engage this board very heavily on this. So, I am very vocal. I may be quiet tonight, but I am very vocal in what I believe, so I'm gonna try to support and look at anything we can do to help you out. So, give us a little chance, it's all I'm asking.
Call me personally. I'll, I'll show you all the documented things that I have, if you care.
I'd love to see your doctor's reports. I really would. If you'd be willing to share that, I'd like to see that. Anybody that has any, any doctor's reports with respect to what's going on over there based upon your examinations that they'd like to.
This is just the beginning of that.
I mean, if you can get them to us, because we really need Johnny Stambro.
I have lung problems. I've been on the board for over seven years. We've never had this.
If this testing is going to take a few weeks, what is your, what is your recommendation to those of us who have children in the area and have been told by our pediatrician that we cannot go to that home until we have resolved this issue? It's the holiday time. This is our babysitters. We have to go to work.
Do you know what my, my doctor said?
I don't see doctor.
Put your house up for sale. Don't tell them. Just sell. Don't tell them.
All right, let's move on.
I want to see what, what's asked.
At this time, motion is a second to call a recess to the meeting. You've been here. Is the Village Board meeting minutes? Resolution to approve the Village Board meeting minutes of November 12, 2015. I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to review these prior to the meeting. Any questions, comments, additions, deletions? If not, entertain a motion a second to accept the Village Board meeting minutes of November 12, 2015.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Velcane?
He's not here. I was absent from the meeting, so.
You can still vote.
You can still vote.
All right, I vote yes.
Mayor Cahill? Motion passes.
Next is a resolution to approve the Village Board meeting minutes of November 24th. Questions, additions, deletions, anyone? In that case, I'll entertain a motion a second to approve the Village Board meeting minutes of November 14, 2015.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Ippolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Questions? Anyone? Jerry? Darryl? Do you have a question?
I had a question regarding the parkas.
The parkas?
The parkas. We spent like $1,800 on parkas?
No, everything wouldn't fit on that line. It was parkas shirts, gloves, sweatshirts.
Right.
All those, the, the reflective safety gear.
Okay. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't buy those last year, too.
No, we bought.
We bought them like once every three to five years.
We bought T-shirts last year.
Right.
And some sweatshirts. I think that last year, I believe it was last year is when we started, we did, we did away with some of the Sinta's shirts.
Right.
And, and went with the, you know, the lime green with the reflective safety vest built in, kind of.
Right.
We did replace some of the shirts. I didn't get a ton of T-shirts this time. Frankly, there was some discomfort on them, so we're looking at it, we're trying out a different type right now. The bands, the reflective bands are not very comfortable, the way that they're sewn in or attached. There's some that are, look more like a tire tread, so we're looking at those ones.
All right, I just wanted to confirm that we didn't buy those parkas last year.
No, we bought some parkas last year, but not for the same people.
Okay. I just wanted, just to confirm that. Okay, that's the only question I really had. Anybody else have any questions? All right. In that event, I'll entertain a motion a second to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Ippolito?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next we have a resolution to pay, no, I apologize, authorization for Christine Lezak to fund the health savings account for 2016, which is pretty standard, we do Questions? Everybody's familiar with the HSA accounts, correct?
Yep.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion a second to authorize Christine Lezak, our treasurer, to fund the employee house savings accounts.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ippolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next we have a resolution for the authorization to pay Marathon Engineering $1,800 for professional services rendered for the design plans related to the West Main Street Culvert project to be paid out of the reserves, I believe, that we set up for the, the Main Street, West Main Street Culvert project. Correct? Jake?
Oh, yes. Yes.
A question related to this, not tangentially, I should say, when are we scheduled to start this project?
Right now, I'm trying to work with Mr. Cook that lives next door in Birchgrass Tree. One of the first phases is removing, did that tree removal scheduled? They gotta remove, or schedule with Argini, and I've talked to Rich McEachick from the county.
Right.
We're gonna have a pre-construction meeting quick with CP Ward when we go to start that process. And I want to know when the tree's scheduled, I'm not getting in and going.
Okay.
But he's been working with Argini, and I believe the 18th right now is the day that it looked like they had an opportunity to, because they have to cut the electric.
Right.
Drop that, so they can get the tree out of the way.
Okay.
And sleeve the law offices, it's tough with no electricity.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions on this? And this is the plan that we talked about and we authorized, just to make sure everything was, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's with respect to this project, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion a second to pay Marathon Engineering the $1,800 for professional services.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Ippolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the revised policy 8-12, conferences, training We can't see what the previous language was, but this is what we're changing, proposed to change it to, correct, Josette?
Yeah, correct.
Any questions? I think the main change was if the cost of the conference or training course exceeds the $100 we agreed to, correct?
Yeah.
All right, anybody have any issues, questions?
Nope.
In that event, I'll entertain a motion a second to approve the revised policy 8-12, conferences and training courses. And should it pass, I would request that, Josette, you have these changes published and distributed to all employees to put into their policy books. Motion, do I have a motion a second?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ippolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with EnerPath. And this is for the lighting efficiency cost savings, correct?
Yes.
What we've been talking about for how long? Six months?
Yeah, I think we've changed a lot of bulbs since we started talking.
Yes, I believe so.
One thing, Trustee Velcane, who cannot be here this evening, did call with, he said he has another idea or another option on this conversion. Obviously, the, and I think as I expressed, the program's changing next year. What I'd like to do ideally is get authorization from the mayor to sign this contract, not send it in to him yet, talk to that guy tomorrow, see. The last time I talked, you know, I researched doing it ourselves, and I researched another company doing it. The other company is smart one. I think when they talked to us about doing it, they said, "Who'd you get the other quote from?" I said, "I'm not giving you what our quote was. Tell us what you can do it for." Says, "Why, I want to know just what company." I told Mayor Path, and he said, "We can't, we can't compete because they have the contract with Nicerto or the, or with the utilities to manage this program." But in fairness, obviously, I'd like to make sure we're getting the absolute best deal. But my inclination is this is gonna be the thing. I know that it's time sensitive, we're not gonna meet again before it really has to be in. So, I'd like, I guess, see if they get authorization for the mayor to sign it, and then do that last little check before I sign it, and then I can, if there is any issue, I'll say, "Hey, you want to change it?" But.
I don't anticipate changing it, but. Okay. I am thrifty.
What does the gal say? You talk to him?
Yeah, it was another company, I think, that he had experience with, said, "Oh, you gotta talk to this guy, and, and, you know, it might, might be able to save us some money." I said, you know, "I researched all the, a lot of different options on it, and I'm real confident and comfortable with this. I know the fire department's doing it, right next door, they're doing it this week. They're getting their conversion done." But fairness, I'd hate to leave something out there that might, might be, might be good, so.
All right, well, if that comes to light, we can always, you know, not submit it, but in the meantime, we'll authorize. I'll entertain a motion a second to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll make that motion. Aye.
Before, before, there's a second, Jake, I have a question. Would the total then come out to around $14,000? The 50, $5,000 whatever for, apparently, EnerPath, and then the $9,000 that's listed there for our expense for putting in place all of those pieces?
Yes, yeah, and the total, the total out of pocket for us is $91.96, but the total project cost is about $14,000. They anticipated, they shared that the RGD portion or the utility would be paying about $5,000. I don't have that other sheet that was part of it, I guess, but I think they showed about a 56, $5,600 if I remember correctly. There it is, $50,90. $50,00. Fifty...
Thirty-four, forty-one.
So wait, but I'm a little confused, too, like trustee Byers. Is it the... It is the nine thousand, one hundred, ninety-six dollars plus the five thousand, thirty-four?
Not for the village. The out of pocket to the village is a nine thousand, one hundred, ninety, was it ninety-one, ninety-six?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well then...
So this five thousand from EnerPath is going to be reimbursed to us or paid by R G N E or...
The total project cost, the information that I have in the emails, the total project cost is approximately fourteen thousand dollars. Our portion's about ninety-one. The R G N E portion, the rebate portion that they get is about five thousand.
Then, then what is this form that they want someone to sign that says, "I authorize EnerPath Services to charge my selected method of payment for the full amount, five thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents at the time of project installation." To me, that sounds like the village is paying that, not R G N E.
Right.
Or any utility.
Well, that's, I guess, why we send these out way ahead of time. I do have the information from him that I could try to forward. There's also two pages that didn't get included in here that talk about the prevailing wage or the prevailing fee portion of it. My understanding is that program that they use, it's got the R G N E logos on top with a little symbol in the middle that says fifty, thirty-four, forty-one or something, doesn't take into account the prevailing wage portion of it. That's why they run the separate one that's got the prevailing wage portion of it. And that's what our amount is, that ninety-one, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-one, ninety-six. I asked him if these were the correct forms. He indicated yes. I didn't see this one. I guess if we don't check it.
The copay detail including prevailing wages for project, the number shown, supersedes the customer's copay amount on the program customers, customer authorization form, so...
So why do they-
This is the customer authorization form. This nine thousand, one hundred, ninety-six dollars, apparently this form supersedes this form.
Well, I could see why you sign the customer authorization form, because that doesn't have any dollar amount in it. But the only one that concerns me is this one that does have a dollar amount that on the face of it looks like you gotta pay it.
This is a customer authorization form. It says right at the top.
Well, there's two of them.
Two of them.
Then there's this one, there's this one with the fine print. This one also says customer authorization.
But this has dollar amount attached to it.
I understand.
Five thousand and this one has, this one has nine thousand, so...
Oh, yeah, one explains the copay amount, one of them doesn't, right?
I know, it's just very confusing the way they do this. The copay detail supersedes the customer copay amount. Well, why even, why even include a customer copay amount then?
Why are we, why are we hearing?
Medical insurance.
What? She's just trying to make it fun. I didn't hear it, so I can't laugh. What'd she say?
She said copass. I didn't know it was medical insurance.
I mean, this one, I think, lays out the, the, the plan and the program, basically says, "We're gonna provide a lift for them to be able to do their work. Our fire department, our existing intermunicipal agreement of using their man lift, be able to do that work." Uh, this one's got, I think, the standard one that would come out on their form when they loaded into their computer program and figure out to calculate the savings based on, you know, voltage and everything else. Then when they have prevailing wage, because it's for a municipality, they throw this one in there. But that's got, as the mayor noted, the thing that's saying this supersedes this copay amount. That was written down here.
I don't have a problem signing the authorization forms, so long as it doesn't include the five thousand dollars.
Right.
All right? And I don't have a problem signing this one. We need to get the paperwork a little more together. It's a little confusing. We have to, we don't have to do this now. We can do it at the next meeting, right?
Yeah, we've gotta have authorization. My understanding is before the end of the month, so...
Okay, so we have another...
Table?
What's today's date?
Twenty-second.
And then the twenty-second.
Maybe medium on the twenty-second.
Yeah, let's get this worked out.
And by then, you'll know whether the other company's the better deal anyhow.
Right.
By the twenty-second, by the twenty-second.
Could we get authorization in anticipation of getting this worked out?
You already, you already did that once. We can't do it twice in one meeting. Oh, no, we didn't. On the one of the piles.
Okay.
It's weird. It's like, why don't they just put the nine thousand dollar amount in instead of the five thousand dollar amount?
I'm, my suspicion is, is part of this program, somebody says, "We need this small customer or small business energy efficiency customer authorization form." Okay, good, here it is. They'll throw the file and never-
You know what, and I guarantee you, you're absolutely right. But before I authorize a payment, I can authorize five thousand and nine thousand dollar payment.
Well, I think because they've got this one here and they figured...
Well, it says it supersedes it. Then they don't need that language about superseding anything.
All right, let's move along.
So we are tabling that till the next meeting?
We're postponing it. Put it on the next.
You need, you need to take a motion here.
A motion in a second to...
To table.
I will make a motion to table this until the next meeting when clarity is clarified.
Second, do I have a second?
I'll second it. Jerry's just pointing at me, so I have nothing to do.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Apolito.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, next we have an authorization to change under supplier from Direct Energy to R G N E for gas service at four addresses. This was as a result of some digging that I believe Christina and Jake did regarding the rates and the potential savings. Uh, there was an email that was sent out. Who sent that email? Was it you, Jake, or Christina sent that email out? With the projected savings if we switch because of the terms that they were charging us, Direct Energy versus R G N E. I know that...
It was a collaborative effort. Jake did one piece and I did another piece.
Right.
I was sick of writing three dollar checks to Direct Energy four times a month.
Right.
Because it's a utility. They need to be paid in a timely manner.
Right.
Um, when we took a very closer, much closer look at it, Joe did a summary for me of some of the costs for the past six months. And Jake called and asked about the per term charge. As you can see by what I sent you, we could potentially save two hundred, almost two hundred and fifty dollars a month by switching. And we're, we haven't had winter yet, but once we get winter and it gets cooler, colder, we'll be using more and we potentially can save more.
Well, great job. And unless anyone has any objections to saving the taxpayers' money, I would entertain a motion in a second uh, to change to direct, from Direct Energy to R G N E that the address is proposed.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Somehow, an agenda item that I requested to be on the agenda has somehow disappeared with respect to uh, an update on the construction of the cell tower. And, you know, that is being spearheaded by trustees Byers and Belkane. Not so much for not only the board's information, but for the public's information, which is why I wanted it on there. There has been no movement to this date. They are, I'm sure, still working on that, but I wanted to update the public that, that there has been nothing to report at this time. So next is...
Tim Conley did get back, however, and he is, I think, waiting for us to come... With the other two representatives, is that correct, Jake? While he's making contact. Tim Conley, he responded back.
Yeah, so he looked for, you know, an update on what our, our progress was, to date on that. And I believe that was the conversation that we're looking to try to get all the representatives.
Okay, so we're, we will not be discussing the item agenda nine this evening. We need to talk about the contract with respect to, uh, um, one of the, one of the companies. And I sent an email out, expressed my concern about that. So we, we can talk about that. And then put this back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Do we have a motion to table it?
Certainly wouldn't wanna go too far into, you know, that since winter conditions may result in additional charges. We don't have any winter conditions, right? Now'd be excellent time to do this. Table it.
Do I have a motion in a second to table this till the next meeting? Pardon?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Dan, you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, no, I do not.
Josette, office?
Uh, no, I just wanted to say that, um, the white Christmas that we had in the village with Santa turned out really great. And I just wanted to thank the employees that helped, Christine Lezak, Joe O'Neill, Jub Lancy, John Carnaval, and Mayor Cahill. And it really turned out really nice.
You forgot somebody. Junior. Wasn't Junior there?
Who?
No, he was there later. Thank you. It was a great evening. We had a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun. And, and our picture ended off-
Our prayers out to Mrs. Claus that she's recovering from her recent ailment. Wish her a speedy recovery. We did, she was missed. We want everyone to know that Mrs. Claus was, was missed and a lot of people and the kids were asking, uh, where Mrs. Claus were, or where Mrs. Claus was. And when Santa said that his, Mrs. Claus was not feeling well, everybody was very sad and wished, and, and sent their best wishes in her speedy recovery, as do the members of this board. And thank you, Santa Claus, again. You made, um, the event fantastic, as you do on an annual basis. So next we have the, what, the comp and overtime report? So the overtime, we're looking at, what, a hundred and nine hours for the last couple of weeks?
Well, that was, um...
Or was that accumulative?
That was for, for, it was for the months, for the weeks of, you know, October seventeenth and November thirteenth.
So I take it most of that overtime was for leaves and what else?
Yes, primarily leaves. There were some that was, you know, from boiling temperatures on the compost piles and things like that.
Okay.
And it's typically reflected down in the, uh, in the call-in section there and the, for the S T B personnel.
So the thirteen of the one oh nine was for the, uh, the temperatures, big temperatures of compost piles?
Yeah.
And the rest of it is primarily for, for leaves?
Yes, primarily leaves. Um, I know that one was the eleventh, they came in, um, it was eight hours, eight or nine hours on the eleventh on Veterans Day there.
Right.
Because of the weather break that we had the opportunity, and then they stayed home. You know, they didn't come in that weekend at all, um, to be able to pick up the leaves. It's had to be known that, you know, we were gonna have two Novembers so far. In this nice weather, we probably, um, probably would've stretched it out a little bit, but I look at the long-range forecast and...
Right.
It certainly wasn't expected.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? All right, next we have a budget modification. And it's going from oh one oh eight, eight, eighty-one, twenty, four two four to, which is vehicle maintenance repair. And it's going to oh one oh eight, eighty-one, twenty, two hundred, sanitary sewer equipment. Uh, the reason listed is that, um, the thirteen thousand dollars we paid for the vacon repair um, is going to be capitalized. Christina, if you could just elaborate for the board a little bit on that, I'd appreciate it.
Very simply, um, because the line isn't, it's not an expense that, it's a one-time thing. It can be spread over five years. And as such, it'll be capitalized, which is the two hundred line, and that's why it's being reassigned.
Okay. And hopefully that's, we're done spending money on that vacon for a little while.
Don't get him started, please. It's town clause.
All right, so I'll make a motion in a second for this budget transfer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Apolito.
Aye.
Mayor Cahill.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Jake, do you have anything for us?
Just a few things. Leave pickups done. Um, we're chipping brush, we're finishing up chipping brush this week. Guys have been taking advantage of the nice weather and doing a couple more sidewalk replacements that we didn't think we have a opportunity to get to right now. And, uh, that's going along. That's it. Drive careful. We'll get snow sooner or later.
I have a question, Jake.
Yeah.
There were three trees cut today on Elm Street, and I understand from the gentleman who was cutting them that there's a plan for thirty trees to be removed in the village. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, there's twenty trees. It's part of our tree inventory that we did. Obviously, when we're inventorying the trees, we shot the locations of them, but also assessed the health of the tree. And assessed, you know, the general overall condition. We also went out after we did the tree inventory, the arborist came out and did a sample of what the recommendations and what those, this findings of the inventory were, whether there were any recommendations as far as management need. Then we took that tree inventory. I was going through sorting what we had, looking for hazardous trees. I started with ones that Fred and Jim, when they did the inventory, have identified. Went out, looked at them. They appeared, you know, certain ones seemed to be hazardous trees. Sometimes they looked, like, no, these ones aren't so bad. They probably can stay. Certainly, if there's anything that was on the line, some were very obvious. If there's anything that was on the line, we put those into a list. Had an arborist come out and look at them, and he's, and we went with the arborist's recommendation. Yes, this tree should go. This tree is all right. We can trim this tree. This tree should go. It went along like that. The three trees in particular, one was at thirty-eight Lapland Park, one was at forty-four Lapland Park. But they're on the side, on Elm Street side. Those were both hollow. One of them's hollow about eight foot up, and I think the other one was about ten foot up or so. One at fifty-five Elm Street, down on the south side, also had a hollow portion in it. And those were all, all inspected by an arborist. And, you know, following some of their recommendations.
Interesting, because there's at least one that is probably hollowed out by ants and it's very obvious and sawdust everywhere. Just wondering why it was, may have been overlooked by an arborist, but... Do you have, uh, do you have a list of them that are going to be cut through the village?
Yes, absolutely. I've sent out a letter to every home where we're gonna take a tree down and explain that we're gonna take a hazard tree down in there, in front of their property. Um, I think that one that you're talking about is on the south side of Elm Street, and I'm gonna double-check that and see what the...
I like it leaving because it leaves every year. It's beautiful, but I'm just saying.
No, I want to see, maybe there's a treatment that can take place, but I certainly wanna see, um, what the recommendation was on that tree. Obviously, if something's hollow and it's a danger, you know...
Sometimes they will leave. The leaves will come out sometimes, even if there is some...
Yeah, I mean, you know...
I know. And the other ones I didn't see.
You can talk to Jake about this in the office.
It's very possible there's, things get, uh...
Football's over.
Things get, um, you know, things get going.
Done, Jerry.
And there's database, there's dropdown menus. It's possible something didn't get, you know, didn't get clicked, so...
I'll come, I'll come in.
Anybody else have any questions this evening?
No.
All right. Well, if anyone would like to call in this evening, the number to call is two six five, three seven seven two. Just please give your, your name and address. It's been a long meeting this evening. We've had a significant, significant amount of, of input, um, from town residents with respect to, uh, the composting at, at, at the sewers treatment plant. Clearly, we have some decisions to be made, some research to be done. When this amount of people show up to express concern, um, clearly, we need to do something, make some, take some action with respect to their concern. to do something, make some, take some action with respect to their concerns. Anyone else have any comments this evening? Alright, in that case, there's been no calls, I'll entertain a motion in a second to move into executive session to discuss, uh, potential union contract and regarding the potential sale of real property, um, which deals with the forty-three acres of the Wellfield property. Or we, we could do, given the light that it is late, people are tired, um, we could add this to the next agenda at the next meeting and just entertain a motion in a second to close the meeting, how does everybody feel about that? I think Jerry would be in favor of that.
I would stay if they stay the entire meeting, weren't.
Okay. Alright. In the interest of, uh...
They have to stay until the end?
In the interest of, uh, moving along and for, uh, for Karen, I'll entertain a motion in a second, or I'll entertain a motion in a second to table the executive session to the following board meeting?
December twenty-second.
December twenty-second.
I'll be doing my Christmas shopping.
I'll make that motion.
Couple days early to start that, isn't it?
Yeah.
Can we move this along?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Would ya?
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Appolito?
Aye.
Pay attention.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.